Simmons. There are other assignments. The CEEAF will be member Doyle. Exu contact will be member Coletta. Minnesota State High School Sports League, member Carrero, and AMSD member Saucer. Did I miss anything? I think that's it. I don't think we need a motion, so I think we just move on to our next topic. We have a number of work session topics before us, so we'll start with the ISD COVID-19 update from Superintendent Berg.
Thank you, Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. Actually, really good news. You know, we've been tracking our COVID data since the beginning of the school year, and it's been a little bit of a roller coaster. When we came to you in January, we were kind of at the high point of the Omicron wave. And the news I'm going to share tonight is really good because we've actually leveled way down. I don't know if we can really use the word "normal" anymore, but back to what we typically see in ranges this time of year. One of the things that we talked about, or at least began to talk about, is which data is going to be most valuable to us. I think when I was, in the end of January, talked a little bit about the community data from Dakota County 55024 and how there's significant lag with that data. I talked to the epidemiologist from Dakota County today because she's the one that typically gives me the 55024 data, and she just said, "It's becoming less and less reliable in terms of a metric for lots of different reasons. Home tests are having an impact on that." So basically, what I have to share with the board, the community tonight, is just our data, what we're seeing, and what we think makes sense as we kind of continue to track, you know, the pandemic as it moves through our system. So if you look at, one of the big things is like, where are we with our staff, right? So when we had to make that shift to flexible learning right before our long weekend around MLK, it was really staff-based. You know, we were seeing upwards of 85 staff out and, you know, high twenties to twenty-five of unfilled absences. And that was just, you know, on the document I have here, that's just our certified and paraprofessionals. Our other staff were mirroring that as well. So our, you know, our nurses, our admin assistants, custodial staff, bus drivers, food services mirroring that, and operationally became very difficult. So I pulled back since the beginning of February, and you can see, well, it may or may not make sense to you, but to us, this looks much more typical and much more normal. And for the big thing, it's not really so much the absences on a given day, it's how many of those are unfilled. And so when we look at that middle column, you know, we're at fourteen. Remember, we have about ten float subs throughout the district that we are using some of our federal funds for this year to make sure that we have people in place. But we can cover this. The other thing that we've seen over the last two weeks is our fill rate going up, which means that people that typically sub who may not have been subbing during the peak of Omicron because they didn't want to come into schools for whatever different reasons, those are being picked back up. So when we start seeing, you know, four, nine, fifteen, and on a Friday, definitely fourteen unfilled, we feel really good about that. I looked at it today again. I think it was fifty-five, fifty-four, something like that, and less than ten were unfilled. So we feel like this is in a really good place, and we don't expect any changes really to this as long as things go on. So operationally, that kind of weight on everybody's shoulders has really kind of been lifted in terms of trying to get all that stuff covered. Because when we have those unfilled absences, you know, you're asking people to fill on their preps, or we're giving up other programs and things like that, so there's just maybe some things that aren't getting done, and it becomes a huge stressor. But now we've gotten back to that point where we're able to do it within our normal means, so we feel really, really good about where we are with our staff. Here's the data since, you know, we came back, basically from, I cut out the first week from after winter break just because I didn't have enough room. But you can see, you know, kind of as we go through there, you know, we kind of hit that peak, and you got to remember in the middle there where it's nineteen to twenty-one, that's only three days worth of data. So that's, you know, when you combine that with the twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, those are some really big numbers in the middle there. And then right after that meeting we had in January, you can see it start to drop again to where last week, you know, we had two staff positives. Elementary is down to twenty-four for five buildings. High school is right around sixteen. Middle school is right around ten. I checked today, we had five reported cases through the weekend and today. You know, at the peak of stuff, we were looking at seventy-five, eighty, and then kind of before that, it was, you know, thirty-five or forty. So we're definitely on the tail end of the thing. And then the far right column is our quarantine, and I think, you know, shifting to that, that five-day quarantine for a positive or a household close contact, and then returning, wearing a mask for five days, has really helped get our kids back in. And so-
Is the quarantine date just for this week?
It's just for that day. So we pull it on a specific day. So it's just, so that is, this is just on Friday because that fluctuates. We have kids going in and kids coming out, but clearly, you know, based on this, you know, I look back, and actually, if people are out there looking, I forgot to change this, so I fixed this earlier on today. Our elementary was like one-thirty-five at the last board meeting, so you can see it's down significantly. And that's twofold, right? It's that change in quarantine procedure, but it's also, we're not seeing illness, any illness like we were seeing before. So again, really good news on that front. And then, you know, last time, we just pulled some days, and we just pick around a day and just kind of get a sampling of like, how many kids are gone, okay? And so right before we made the shift to flexible learning for that extended period of time, you know, our high schools and middle schools were both over twenty percent the day that we picked. That is significant. You almost have between a fifth and a quarter of your kids out for any reason. Again, that's another difficulty in trying to serve the kids that are in person and the kids that are out. When I looked last week, I'm sorry, at the last board meeting, we were between thirteen and eighteen percent, and now you can see, you know, we're between, what is it, six and nine percent, right around there, which is, again, fairly normal given this time of year and things like that. So we've, I hate to use the word, fairly typical. So it's fairly typical for this time of year. So you can see that, you know, things have kind of gotten into a much more rhythm that we know about and that we are prepared to kind of serve and handle. So we feel about, we feel really good about where things are and the direction things are going. So I don't know if people have specific questions around that. I'd be happy to answer any of those.
I'll defer others first.
Yeah, this is just really good to see. Do you have any sense, Jason, from your conversations with either the county or MDH or other, if they're thinking forward to kind of what, you know, what this looks like towards the end of the year here, or is it kind of like, knowing that they're understaffed too, they're just probably going to leave it?
What I've heard through my conversations with other superintendents is that things will look significantly different in a couple of months. And our first thing that comes to your mind is, okay, what does that mean, right? We start hearing that, but in a good way. So, you know, to me, that means, you know, we're a little bit ahead of the curve in terms of pulling back some of our mitigation strategies and things like that from other places. We know other districts around us are starting to do that, but I think we're going to be, overall, the census will be in a much better place a month from now, a month and a half from now, is kind of continue this trend of where things are. And it wouldn't be, I guess, you know, clearly, the peak that we saw in January was much higher than it was a year ago, but again, it followed, it typically followed a similar pattern of where things are. And if that's, if that's right, you know, we kind of got through till about May-ish before we saw a little blip again and things. So I think based on that information, you know, we've just, a lot of the stuff from, I know our local Dakota County is pretty swamped and things, but a lot of the stuff that we hear from MDE is just deferring back to CDC right now with stuff, so.
Do you have a sense for the staff, and I think in particular from the nurses who visited with us a couple meetings ago, just from the updated changes that we made to the policy as well as hopefully with the decrease in cases, are they, is there just a better sense of their stress and their workload, you know, and how they're feeling?
I mean, I think when you see the illness numbers going down, period, I think that's all good. I think that all helps, all those sorts of things. I think, you know, when I talk to our district nurse, you know, I mean, part of their main concern is not only what's going on in our district, but also, they look at it from a bigger picture, right? What's the impact on healthcare and things like that? And so when we see hospitalizations going down, all of those metrics going down, I think that everybody feels like we're in a better place.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that.
Is this decline similar with like other school districts in the county and state?
In terms of numbers? You know, it's hard because a lot of times, Michael, we don't compare numbers to numbers with other districts. When we, I meet with the Dakota County superintendents on a weekly basis, and we talk about, you know, it's more like this, like, hey, our cases are lower this week, you know, or, and things like that. So we don't get specific that way. I'd say based on our conversations, I think what we're seeing is lower than, you know, other areas, but there could be lots of different reasons for that and stuff. But, you know, I, it's just, I think everybody's feeling a sense of relief, and seeing illness go down, how fast it is, is a little bit different, I think, depending on where you are, maybe in the metro and things like that. But I think everybody's seeing a similar decline. I think we're just, what I see is we're probably a little bit faster than some of those other places, so.
And I think we had talked before during the, kind of the peak running up, that, you know, we were experiencing roughly a similar pattern as every other district around us at the same time, too, so.
Yeah, there's no doubt. I mean, again, I mean, we've talked a lot about different things. I think when, you know, we hit the middle of January, we're in the same place everybody else was. I think the big question was, could people make it through their staffing situations? And, you know, one of the things, we don't have a lot of district-wide auxiliary staff. There's a lot of districts around us have a lot of instructional coaches, other people that they can, you know, send out to buildings. We have five. So it's, it's, so for us, when we start to fill those places, different things, some of us are subbing and things like that, we just don't have as many people to be able to send out and get through that some of our surrounding districts were able to, to kind of bridge that really tough gap, so. But we're all in the same spot in terms of the number of cases comparatively speaking to the size, yeah.
Just because we're having our preliminary budget discussion tonight, and the connection to that, I know that they, you know, general consensus is that hopefully the pandemic is moving into an endemic phase over the next, you know, number of months before the next school year. But I'm wondering, from your perspective, Jason, as it relates to planning, you know, from a budget perspective, you just mentioned, like, we have fewer, do we get a sense from, you know, public health that we should still be trying to plan for that type of surge again in the future, or this was kind of like the last-
Yeah, they really haven't talked much more beyond and stuff, you know. So, you know, I mean, it's hard because some of the federal money we've used to help us with, like, and some of the, so some of our testing has allowed us to hire additional health assistance to help with our attendance and things like that. Our float subs all come out of those federal dollars, and so those will be running out, you know, between this year and next year. So, I mean, our, I think we have to keep it in the back of our mind. Is it something we're specifically planning around? Kind of, but not, it's, I think last year, our baseline would be, was more along the lines, we're still going to be in this sort of a thing, what do we need to have in place? I think it's more along the lines now, we'll see some remnants of this, but we don't anticipate the impact that we've seen the last two years, and to have it look much more like it did maybe pre-pandemic than it did the last two years.
Okay. Jason, in meeting with other superintendents, how many other districts? I know of one neighboring district that took, like, did away with masks. Are there other ones following suit?
I think everybody's in, somewhere in the process of reexamining that.
Well, okay.
Yeah. And that's metrowide.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, just, I guess, two questions. The absences slide?
Yep.
The delta between that number and the number of confirmed cases throughout, I mean, that, I'm just asking if the number of absences is far beyond COVID issues, or is it taking care of family issues, or?
So when we just pull that, it's simply out for half the day, for any reason and stuff. So it could have been-
Could be appointments, could be vacation, could be anything.
Yep, yep.
Interesting. And then I guess in line a little bit with maybe the other side of Hannah's question, I mean, I think, as I think towards the end of school, like, so one thing really interesting in our schools is the African drummers that come into the elementary schools. It's been awesome, right? It's been an awesome experience for our kids, and traditionally, families are able to come and enjoy that, too, with, you know, and see their kids perform. This year, that was different. It was streamed. Understand that that was a meaningful and necessary change this year. I think most parents recognize it, but, you know, you get toward that end of, end of the year, and there are other sorts of celebrations and activities. Is there some conversation, or can we start talking about how we normalize some of those things, too?
Yeah, I think, especially in elementary buildings, I think that's part of their discussion about what those can look like. You know, I think ensuring when we have all of our learners in the building that we are a little bit slower with some of that stuff than after-school activities that are volunteer and things like that, because kids really don't have a choice in maybe who's around them and things like that. But those are most certainly conversations that are being had, and will continue to be had as we see things continue to decrease, so. Yep, that's part of the ongoing conversation of how do we roll that back in a way that, you know, balances all those things, especially during the school day.
Yeah, and hopefully by the time we get to April, everyone's just really comfortable with where we're at, right?
Yep.
And certainly could be creative about being outside, like, you know, track day or anything that occurs outdoors. Jason, just to build on this question, can you tell us, from a district perspective, if, I'm assuming they're looking to you or the administration for guidance, like, what's allowable within our current parameters as we try to plan these? Are we, are we as a district providing, like, you know, I guess, number limits, or kind of, how are you, how are you advising them as they're-
Well, I think right now, it's looking at what potentially the activity is, how many people would involve, is it indoors? I mean, all those sorts of things. So I don't think we're going to put a specific number limit on things. I think it's taking a look at each activity individually, and then specifically, again, at each level, making those decisions, so we don't have one building saying yes to something and another building saying no to something. So that's all being done in concert.
Okay. That's helpful.
My only final comment is, thank you. I think you have all done an outstanding job of managing through all of this and, you know, and, you know, patience with me and too, with some of the questions, and I think, you know, you said you and other, I know Lisa and Chris and principals filling in where you have to, where staff is short. Just, I don't know, just thank you. You guys have been outstanding. I'm very proud of the district, proud to be on the board through all of this, but I'm just very appreciative and grateful that we've got this leadership team who have put in this time and this effort and this energy to make sure our kids can get back to school faster or in school longer, and just having the best education experiences we can possibly do. That's the only statement. Thank you.
Yeah, well, it's the little thing. I was going to say this when I, before we end on this, but I was in our lunchroom, and maybe I told you, I can't remember who I told this to, I ran into one of the COVID coordinators, just how your day is going, and she goes, "Well, there's not much COVID to be coordinating today." And I'm like, "Yes, that's awesome." Right? I mean, that's perfect what you ought to hear, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, like I said, I feel, we feel good about where we're at. I think the last couple of weeks has allowed our staff throughout all levels to take a deep breath and just kind of to not have to worry about so much operational stuff and focus on some of those other things, which now then allows them to think about, okay, what could something look like two weeks from now, three weeks from now? How can we, you know, put that in a situation that balances where everybody are at with that stuff? And that's an ongoing thing, so. But thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Anything else? All right. I think we can move on to our next item, which is the initial 2022-2023 budget discussion. Jane?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, Superintendent Berg, members of the community out there in TV land or on your social media. I'm here tonight to begin the conversation around our 22-23 budget. Before we can look forward, though, we do need to look what has gotten us here. And if you can recall, March of 2020, we had this little thing called the pandemic hit us, right? Which forced us all to go into distance learning. Luckily, it was towards the end of the year, and we were able to end our FY20 school year in pretty good shape. We all thought that it was going to end, we were going to start our 2021 school year, you know, back in school. Lo and behold, we were in distance learning for the majority of that school year, and we were able to come out financially on the positive side again that year due to savings in utilities, because we weren't using our buildings, because we didn't have people in there, staffing, because we just couldn't find them, and transportation. Which brings us to our 21-22 budget. If you can recall, in July, we brought a budget forward that had us using about $2 million in our federal funds and $2 million of our assigned fund balance. At that time, the legislature was not done with their work, but, you know, we have to move forward, we have to adopt a budget. Luckily, they did come through, and they provided us with an additional 2.5% on the gen ed formula, which is roughly 1.5 million. And with that 1.5 million, we will let that drop to the bottom line, meaning we probably, if everything comes out as we are projecting and budgeting, that we won't pull as much money out of our assigned fund balance for the year. As we continue through the 21-22 school year, we did hire additional support staff for our learners, and I am currently working on amending the budget and should have something forward late winter here, beginning of spring. Which brings us to 22-23. And what do we know? What do we know? It's the second year of the biennium, right? So by statute, they don't have to do a thing. The legislature and the governor do not have to pass one single bill if they don't want to. Now, I'm not aware, in my lifetime, where we've ever had an $8 billion structural surplus, meaning that it's ongoing, right? They have about a million dollars that they, hopefully, if they're smart, pay back unemployment to the federal government, just to wipe that off the books, right? And there are many groups coming forward saying, "Well, where's my money? What can I have?" And education is right in that boat. And currently, what is on the table are many different plans, but the three things that have kind of rose to the top are our gen ed formula, the governor is proposing an additional 2% on the gen ed formula, special ed cross subsidy. The governor wants to go back to funding for, back to FY19, which would give us about an additional $450,000 to $500,000. But there's also a couple bills out there that it would totally eliminate our cross subsidy. So if you think about that, our FY20 cross subsidy is $8.1 million. Now, if you think about that and divide it by our staff ratio for teachers, that would be an additional 103 teachers we could hire if they eliminated that. I mean, that just kind of gives you the depth of how much money that we're talking about and what we would be able to do with it. The third thing is EL cross subsidy. There hasn't been a lot of details with that. We currently have about a $500,000 cross subsidy with EL. The last go-around here, when they put additional money on EL, we got about $8,000. So it's not a ton of money, but every little penny helps. So we know going in that we will be getting a 2% on our gen ed formula. We know that that's already done, that happened in the first year of the biennium. We also know that our enrollment is declining, and we know that because our kindergarten classes that are coming in are smaller than our graduating classes. We are seeing enrollment decline across all of our grades, it's not just one. And we also know that our child count, which is special ed, which happens every December 1st, over December 1st, what special ed kids are in our district over December 1st, is wholly consistent, but their needs are increasing, which means with increased needs comes increased staff. Because they are unable to be in our classroom for a longer period of time, they need to be outside of the classroom. So we, those are all of our knowns at this point for our 22-23 budget from the legislature perspective. As we look at our parameters, we have, enrollment is not listed here. I usually update that with our second meeting here in February. We do know that for 21-22, our enrollment is at 68-25. That's what we have currently in our budget. On the revenue side of things, we know that we're getting that 2%. We also know the levy that was passed in December by the board will be considered in our revenue, and also, any other statutes that have already been agreed upon will be included in our revenue projections. If there happens to be any grants that are there, we'll be talking with those grant managers to make sure that funding is going to continue before we put them in the budget. On the expenditure side of things, we will make sure that we follow all the employee compensations for salary, fringe benefits. We will preserve and support district goals and strategies. We really want to make sure that's the last thing that we, if we make budget alignments, what we're going to do. As we look at the parameters, they are all going to be held constant at this time for the normal levels, based on our February 1 enrollments. So you can see there's a slew of them. Currently, at this time, we will leave those alone. If we're going to change them, we'll bring them back to the board. As we look at class size, a couple of things here that I want you to note is, first of all, the class sizes listed here are actually smaller than what's currently in our policy 1005. And that is due to the fact that we were able to reduce class size when we passed the levy in 2015. So just keep that in mind as we continue to roll forward, that there's always the potential of that changing. Also, when you come to class size, we will be making and rightsizing our staff for what we currently have for enrollment numbers. So we'll see, we will see some reduction in staffing, just because our enrollment is declining. We can't continue to keep staff when we don't have the students to support that. We will also, at this time, be having, you know, five FTE for the superintendent reserve, and currently, we are looking at the two FTE for special education. As always, we try to make sure to prioritize anything that touches the classrooms and the learners, and we always are keeping in mind what our fund balance is to make sure that we stay within policy. So from here, what we'll do is, we are currently having budget conversations with all budget managers in the district, and we will be coming back at the end of February to approve these. And if any time between now and when we approve the budget, if we need to make any changes, we would bring them back to the board as well. This is just the framework to get our budget going. That's what the parameters are for. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Just some other context. So when Jane talked about, you know, our assigned fund balance, you know, we project having about $4 million in that assigned fund balance, right? And that was set aside through that 2015 levy to get us and bridge that gap until the board was ready to go out for a levy again. So we have about $4 million in there, and we have approximately $2 million in federal funds that we can use during the school day. We have other federal funds available, but it's for the summer and some other things. We have about $2 million that we can use.
Is that SR2 and SR3?
Yeah, yep. And then there's some other FIN codes and all this other stuff that is specific, that we have about $600,000 that is targeted for, like, during the summer and some of those other things, where, I'll be honest, we're trying to see if there's some creative ways that maybe we can work with the state to see if maybe we can use that maybe during the school day some. That's a lot of summer money.
Okay.
What we found, well, what we found is, like, right, like, families, yeah, like, families that typically access our programs kind of still do that, and, you know, and other families have other things that they do, and those really don't cross. And so I know that Chris and Lisa has worked with community ed, some of the, to really expand that, to see what that could look like, but I'm not, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to-
Spend it all.
Yeah, that's just a lot of money for the summer. I mean, to be honest, it's another one of those things where it'd be nice if they just said, "Hey, use it where you need to use it," right? And go from that sort of thing, so. And then I just, you know, Jane talked a little bit about our cross subsidy, and I just think it's important that when people hear about this, and I know the board's going to talk a little bit about a resolution potentially, but, you know, it was, you know, four years ago, it was $6.1 million. So in the last four years, it's jumped, you know, almost a third. And, you know, Jane talked a little bit about some of our child, our special education child account has stayed the same. And so it's not like we have an influx of kids, it's just, like she said, the needs are more, and it only takes potentially one or two kiddos in a program that would trigger us to, you know, to create another center base or, you know, you know, other, some other types of supports that, you know, may add few additional people and things like that. And then I asked her to look this up. I just thought this was interesting as well, when we start talking about, you know, people talk about fully funding education and all this other stuff and, you know, inflation. you know, people talk about fully funding education and all this other stuff and, you know, inflation. And to me, the, it all goes, I mean, I think if they could just, if some way, shape, or form, the special education cross subsidy would be taken care of, it would fix a lot of things for school districts. Because ours is $8 million. She gave you the FTE. But another way to think about this is, we generate about $4 million in our levy, our voter-approved levy every year. So think of that, that $4 million goes, you could think of it as goes and cuts in half your cross subsidy. I mean, if, again, that $8 million was taken care of, I mean, it frees up $8 million, but you're also now using your levy money, you know, to do some of those other things. So there's just lots of different ways to think about it. And the other hard part too with that cross subsidy is it's really hard to be planful around that, you know? I mean, you could have a kiddo move in and, you know, bring those specific needs and things like that. You could project and you can think, but there's some pretty big influxes in there. And we have seen, even though our special ed population number of students hasn't grown, we have seen our EL students that we serve grow significantly. And we know that that's going to continue to be an area that we need to provide support. We're seeing many more new to country. So, you know, you're talking about a whole different level of services to provide those kiddos, you know, when really they don't have any experience with the English language at all. So, you know, those things are just going to increase as, as things go. So some, some things that we know, but we don't know, so.
That was going to be my question. I don't know if there's going to be an answer to this yet. But I know that there's a House bill right now that has been written that the state will pay for special education. I know we've talked about this on the board for a long time. But from the Senate side, they haven't done a companion bill. So they've been asking people to, to call and talk to senators on that. Do you think this could be the year? I mean, is the Senate just totally avoiding it? I mean, have you heard anything from that? Because that would be amazing if that would be covered.
Negotiations. And so, I mean, that's part of it, you know? And so it starts at a place and goes from there.
You mentioned the Walts' budget has a certain amount of this. How much of the cross subsidies, is, cross subsidy, is federal related? How much of it is federal obligations that are not being paid?
Well, so if you think about it, the law that's currently in place is, the feds are supposed to pick up 40% of it. They pick up like 15% of it. So, you know, your gap there is 25% that they're not picking up. I don't have dollar wise. I mean, if you want to take 25% of 8.1 million.
Yeah, but I'm just not familiar enough with like what the state typically would pick up. Are they, is the state of Minnesota also not fulfilling a statutory obligation in the way the federal government is not fulfilling a statutory obligation?
I don't know necessarily if the state has a statute where they said that they will pick up 40% or 50% or the remaining 60%. I can look into it, but I'm not aware that there is. The more the conversation has been that the state hasn't put an influx into special education because the federal government isn't withholding or with, you know, paying their portion of special education. So they're like, so why should we?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the hard part too is, right? You know, the state, they put 2% on the formula, you know? It, that can get, that gets swallowed up pretty easily with your cross subsidy. And so, I mean, it's that back and forth on, well, whose responsibility is it? Whose is it not? Well, I mean, we need to support these kids. And the more money that comes from general fund to do that, just, it weakens the whole system. And so, you know, putting 1% here, 2% here, it sounds good and feels good. But the reality is, you know, for us, for an $8 million, you know, gap, that doesn't even dent that, so.
And, you know, do you want to tie it to the gen ed formula? You know, do you try, tie your special ed? Then the whole thing becomes, then it just gets lost, right? Kind of like our transportation, when that got thrown in, it just is lost. So I don't know if that's the answer either. They should just pay 8 million and we'll be done.
Nice.
There's much more, I mean, I will say the last two years has been much more conversation, at least around the impact the cross subsidy has had on school districts budgets, which is a good thing. Now, what comes out of it, you know? You got to start with a conversation, which is good. And a couple of years ago, they held it steady, which was helpful.
Yeah. This year, 21, 22, they put 10 million, but it was one-time money. So it was only for 21, 22, so.
Jason, are there other priorities? I appreciate the, set aside the 2.0 FTEs for special education. Are there other priorities that you'd like to see? That, I know the 5.0 FTEs for things like the instructional coaches that you mentioned or other needs that you or administration has identified through this year, like additional mental health support? Or I guess are there?
So we've been fortunate because part of what we did probably before the pandemic started is we did allocate X number of FTEs at each level so that they could do some of those things. So some of the things that buildings added were behavior interventionists to help things like that. Some buildings have added counselors. So we have some of that, clearly not what we need, but we have some of those in place. The reality is the goal, again, our administrators are working through this. You know, I think our goal is to try to keep a lot of that stuff in place as much as we can over the next couple of years. But knowing, you know, we're projecting about a $4 million deficit. You know, we knew that going in, that it was going to be structural because of what we did last year. We only cut about $700,000 and, and stuff, so, you know. But, you know, we have $6 million to offset that. But we do need to start chipping away at that structure lease so that it doesn't compound and stuff. So, you know, we're, we're having internal discussions around trying to identify about a million dollars worth of reductions in some way, shape, or form.
Okay, appreciate that.
Any other questions? I just have one point of clarification. I think last year and we had about this time, I think you referenced that earlier. We had agreed to, I think, look into, I think it was $2 million into the assigned fund balance. Did you say that we ultimately dipped in only about $500,000? I just wanted to make sure.
That's what we're projecting.
Yep.
What's that?
That's what we're projecting and budgeting, yep.
Okay, so I don't, okay, understood, thanks. I just wanted that point of clarification, that we approved X, we didn't have to go that deep.
Right, because, yep.
Yep, and Jane's conservative and she's helping me be more conservative. But one of the things that we are going to do when we build a budget is we are going to build it off of a 1% additional on the formula. So we're going to build it on 3%, which I, I think is reasonable because I think in some way, shape, or form, we are going to get some additional money. 1% is about what, $500,000? So it's an additional $500,000 worth of revenue. I think that we'll get more than that in some way, shape, or form. And I think, a little bit like what we did with the additional money, we would let that fall to the bottom line unless it was just a windfall. You know, if they took care of the special ed cross subsidy, we'd have a much, we'd have a much more enjoyable conversation about instructional coaches, mental health, you know, those sorts of things that we could bring in. But, you know, if it's, you know, if it ends up being, you know, 2% and we get an additional $500,000, we would say, let's just hang on to that. We know that we're going to have another deficit next year just because things compound and things like that. Let's, let's let that go to help offset that into the future. So right now, our suggestion would be, you know, $4 million deficit, use $3 million of the $6 million that we have out there, save that additional $3 million to help with us next year. And then anything that would fall, kick that forward as well, so.
And one other thing, I think, just as a board for us to have in the back of our minds as we, as we talk about and know that we'll need to approach the levy renewal at some point, deciding the timing of that, is that the city of Farmington is seeking, is putting a referendum on this year's ballot. So, yep, for like a recreational development in the community. So it's just something I think that's related, that our taxpayers will be asked from a community perspective prior to.
Yeah, it's all context, it's really important, right?
Yeah.
Excuse me? Any other comments or questions? All right. I think we can probably move on. Yeah, thanks, Jane. I think we could probably move on to our next topic. We had a request to discuss the public comment periods that I guess are open in our work sessions about whether we continue to record those with the rest of the meeting. Jaclyn, do you want to talk to that?
Yeah, it had been brought up a few times, especially over the past year. So is that the whole purpose of public comment is for people to come here and address the board? And so is it necessary to have it televised? Especially, I feel like over the last year, some individuals maybe grandstanded a little bit because they knew they were being livestreamed or televised. So just something for the board to consider.
And is this specific to work sessions or?
All public comment.
Okay, at both meetings. Yeah, I support that. I think that, I agree that, especially from a community perspective, you know, prior to being on the board and just watching meetings myself, there were meetings this year that we had almost an hour of public comment. And I think that, that it's, of course, important for us to hear that as a board, but to have that as an additional add-on to the meeting and the business being conducted, I don't know that there's a strong value add for continuing to record those as part of the meeting. Because the business that's conducted, both at our work sessions and our regular meetings, starts when we convene and ends when we adjourn, so.
Well, and also, off of that comment, our business meetings, people can come and talk about anything. Whereas work sessions have to be on the agenda. But so sometimes, yeah, you'll have public comment that isn't necessarily relating to anything that evening.
My question, I think if I have one, it's just, policy-wise, I know when MSBA talks about this with other districts, and I don't, do we know, do we know other districts that are not including it in their public or whatever, in their livestream or the recording? Can we look into that?
Yeah, there are, I know, I know there are, I don't know the exact ones. I know there are, because it's come up on our conversations with Dakota County superintendents. I know that they've shifted to a few different ways to handle, quote unquote, the public comment parts of those meetings. And not just have it be your typical, somebody at the lectern recording sort of a thing. So there are districts in our year that did, I can check on that.
Yeah, and the, when I've seen MSBA talk about this, there's two things. At the business meeting, this is sort of a technical thing, right? The public comment period of a business meeting actually takes place before the agenda. So it actually isn't part of the meeting anyways. So it's much easier to say, we can or could not, we don't have to change a policy around that at all, right? Work sessions, we don't adjourn until after the public comment period. So technically, it's part of the agenda. And also, the content is limited to topics on the agenda. So my, my question then, and just playing devil's advocate if nothing else, do we need to change our policy and our structure of our meetings in order to make that change? And because it's, I guess the other question is, because the public comment then therefore is comment on topics of the agenda, is it more interesting and compelling to include it within the context of the recording? Am I being clear? I feel like I'm talking.
Yeah, no. That you bring up a good point. I would defer to.
Well, we'd have to check and see. I mean, one of the reasons, one of the, the reason that public comment is outside the meeting of the business sessions was on a recommendation of Dennis to move that outside of that. So to your point, that would be really easy to do because the meeting hasn't technically started. I think if we were going to do something else on the work sessions, we'd probably have to check and see what that looks like and stuff. So exactly what that would look like.
And that can be part of our, I know we're going to have a discussion later in June regarding work sessions and how those are done anyway. So that could be part of that conversation as well.
Yeah, I, I agree, we could, we could table it until we're having the broader discussion around, you know, our approach. I think we've made some really positive changes in the last year to increase the transparency of our meetings, to make it more accessible to the public. We've prioritized community engagement. I think for me, the difficulty in this last year of seeing the public comment piece was most of the people from our community were respectful and, and generated, I think, a productive discussion. We know that there were people that attended outside of our community that used our platform in a non-positive, non-productive way because they had an audience. So, so for me, again, I, I love the discussion around how do we keep connecting with parents and students and staff and our community in a way that represents our community well and, and shows that, you know, we are trying to be thoughtful about, about how we're engaging and, and using our platform. And when I say platform, I mean the live streaming and our board meeting.
Sure.
Is meaningful and healthy and representative of our community.
Yeah, I mean, I think transparency is critical to these meetings. And yeah, I don't want to take action that would be deemed or actually have the impact of making others feel like they can't come to the board and be heard, right? So, all good questions. I think it's something worth talking about. And I think, and, you know, something we can continue to address. Do you want to just table it until we have a broader conversation around our meetings?
Well, we're not making any decisions tonight anyway, but.
Or is it something you want to see?
I think the easy, I think for business meetings, it would be, just be a lot easier to make that decision. But, I mean, it's obviously up to the board, so.
So we bring a motion, do we need to bring a motion then to that, to the, to the business meeting? What's the right, do you know?
Certainly do that.
Yeah. Or do we just make a decision? Yeah, okay. Well, let's, let's talk about putting that on the agenda for the business meeting at the end of the month. Okay. Final item is the idea resolution. Melissa was going to talk about that briefly. She flagged this, I can go ahead and pick it up. But MSBA flagged in its legislative agenda, they're asking school boards, actually, we just talked about this, right? There's a huge statutory obligation on behalf of the federal government to pick up 40% of special education costs that they have never fulfilled. And it's a pretty significant drag on our school district. I can only imagine what the cumulative effect of that is on districts across Minnesota. And MSBA has asked school districts to consider a resolution encouraging our United States congressional representatives to pass a bill and to advance a bill that would get the federal government to, to fulfill its obligation for, for special education financing. I guess I'll just open it up for conversation. I know we, the sample resolution was in the agenda. I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to review it, but any questions or comments about it?
Just strong support for it.
Yeah. This is a long time coming. And it's not just our district. I know so many districts are, are affected by the, you know, the money that's put out for special education and not receiving that additional federal income that was guaranteed for them. Putting things in place and now having to pay for it is, is very taxing, not only for us, but a lot of districts, so.
Pun intended?
Yeah.
All right. I do, obviously, I mean, I think Representative Craig has actually taken, done some activity on this since she's been in office.
And before her, Representative Klein.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I mean, he, I just want to make sure I got the name right. Because it's been a while, but he, he had this as well. So, I mean, it's been fortunate that even people from two, two different parties, right, have carried on from this and have been really on top of it, so.
Okay. I guess, is there any further discussion? I mean, maybe the next thing to do is just ask, Jane, can we work to fill in the blanks on this so that we can have a conversation at the business meeting?
Sure.
And take action?
Yeah, we'll bring it, yep, we will get everything set, yep.
All right. Moving on. Policy discussion.
Okay, so I can take this. This was reviewed as part of our last year's committee with Rebecca and I. So I can summarize the policies that are before the board tonight. So starting with policy 1002, student retention, promotion, and acceleration. So in terms of the changes that have been made, I'm assuming all board members had an opportunity to take a look at this before our meeting tonight. But our administration kindly also reviewed and updated this policy. The, the content did not change so much as the wording that we're using to support and better reflect our, our approach to, to these things. So no significant changes in process, action, or meaning, but just.
Aligned to the strategic plan?
Aligned to the strategic plan, certainly, yep. And, and updated language to reflect that. Any questions on 1002?
None from me.
Okay. Next policy then is 1005, management of elementary class size. The addition made to this and I, in section one, was just to indicate that the school board may deviate from this policy based on approved budgetary parameters. So to make the connection clearer to, you know, the framework that Jane just. So to make the connection clear to, you know, the framework that Jane just presented, that we can be outside of that if provided we have reviewed and approved that by the board. Other than that, no additional or significant changes to policy 1005. Questions or discussion? 1007, shared time students. So this policy did not have any changes to it, just due for a review, but no changes to this one. Any questions or comments? Okay.
None from me.
So this serves as our second reading, Marianne and Lori. And these will then come forward to our business meeting in two weeks.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Seeing no public attending and no public comment, we can move on to adjourn the meeting. I get a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:52 PM.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Coletta. All in favor?
Aye.
All, aye. This meeting is adjourned.